It was hard. They needed a new HVAC.
All right, we will call this this month's work session to order. And Paul Moore, I believe, is going to do the invocation for us. Paul, thank you. He did he wore a tie to do the invocation. Thank you, Paul. Like the formality, Paul.
Oh, man.
Thanks so much for the for the honor. Let's bow our hands and pray. Father, we thank you for this awesome privilege to be in your presence. Father God, we thank you for anointing our Davie County employees to do your work in serving the people of this great county. Father God, we ask that you give our commissioners the wisdom as they lead. Father God, I pray that all of our colleagues in this room and even those that aren't here today, Lord God, I pray that we will lead with a righteous clarity as we serve the people of our community. And every prospective department, every job that we have, Father, that we would humble ourselves before you and lead in a manner that you have called us to lead and serve. Lord, the Bible says in Psalms thirty-three twelve, blessed is a nation whose God is the Lord. And may we honor and glorify you today in our meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
And for those that don't know, Paul does an outstanding job as our Director of Parks and Rec. And now to do our pledge is Melissa Parker, who is our Director of Board of Elections, and she just came off a very busy season. So we're glad you're here, Melissa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we we're going to adopt the agenda now. We need to make a correction to the agenda. And I will I will say this, we we normally do not do business at these meetings. We've made that very clear, but a federal judge has told us that we will do an item of business today. So we're going to have to do it. I need a motion to add, we will change adjournment to item eleven. We will add item ten, a business item where we will take a vote coming out of closed session on a specific issue. We're not quite sure what that will be, the terms of that motion. We'll make that when we come back out from a closed session. Do I have a motion to change the agenda?
I make a motion for the changes.
We have a second? Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you. Now, a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you. Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up today, reporting to you, I'm gonna let Brad Blackwelder do the introductions. But when we recently approved our custodian and cleaning contract, you all did ask for us to come back six months later to give an update. So I'm gonna hand it over to Brad now.
Good board, thank you. Good morning. Just take a few seconds here to kind of elaborate on what Brian said. You know, we had our contract renewal back in the summer. We awarded the ESS, who was the current cleaners in that contract. We asked them to kind of give us update monthly reports. So they're here this morning to give you that six-month update. This is a formal introduction of who they are, the business, what they're doing in the county, and what their future anticipations are in innovation. So I'd like to bring Mr. Ruth, Mr. Martinez, and Mr. Dobson. And Mr. Johnson up here to present to y'all.
Good morning, everyone. To the Board of Commissions, to everyone in the room, good morning. I am Edgar Ruth, founder and president of Environmental Service Systems. We are excited to be here today to present to you Environmental Service Systems. We're not new to the county. We, I guess, started working with the county over four years ago. We did were successful in the first contract with the county about four years ago. And then, of course, it went out for bid the second time, and we were successful in continuing to do business with the county. We appreciate the opportunity that you all have afforded us over the first three years of the contract. And then now we're into the second contract. We understand that you could have chose any company to provide service to your facilities. But we are very thankful and grateful that you all chose us. With me this morning is members of my team that touched the county's contract. So I wanted to make sure that I brought them, I bring them with me this morning so that you can see who they are. So I'll let each one of them introduce themselves. We'll start with Joey Martinez.
Thank you, Edgar. Good morning, everyone. My name is Joey Martinez. I'm Senior VP of Operations. Been with the company for ten years and support Kenny with whatever he needs here to make sure that we do a job for you all.
Thank you, Joey.
Good morning. I'm Kenny, and I am the Project Manager here for Davie County. So I'm the be all, do all for you all.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Tamara Johnson, and I am the Operations Manager, and we're here to support in any way that we can. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, team. So Kenny, I think most of you probably have, if you hadn't, if you don't know him, you have seen him in and out of the facilities quite often because he's here on site that actually oversee housekeeping, operation, janitorial for Environmental Service Systems. We're real proud of the job that Kenny has done since coming to work for us. Once we got the contract, he's been a long-term player for us and has done a wonderful job. So we definitely are very proud of that. Joey resides in
The Atlanta area.
Atlanta area. So but Joey also touched the county facilities also, so he's a support for Kenny. And Tamara is out of out of the Raleigh office. So he's a lot, somewhat closer. I actually reside in Charlotte, North Carolina. Okay, so I'm even closer. Corporate office is located in Charlotte, North Carolina, which is where I I sit.
Quick, briefly, Kenny, you live here?
I live in Liston.
So you do not live in, none of you live in Davie County? Okay.
We always like to start our presentation by doing a safety moment. You know, we, all of us has probably hear about slips and falls, especially when it comes to facilities. And what we have here is a list of common hazard that contribute to slips and falls, contaminants on floors, especially with when you don't have carpets on floors and you deal with a lot of tile and tarazol in a lot of the older buildings. So that is something that we are very cautious about, where we make sure that if it's on a rainy day, we put out wet flow signs and make sure that people are aware that there could be water, even if it's not right in the area. There could be water or somewhere in the building as you tour through the building. What we always tell our staff is after the rain has gone or there's not any wetness anywhere, make sure we pick them up because we have had some time where people come in the building and slip and fall for any reason, and it couldn't be, it may not have been wetness, and claim that they slip and fall because the floor is wet. So as much as we put them out, we definitely want to always take them back in. Okay? And then you have like the weather condition, poor lighting, that could actually contribute to slip and fall. So we always want to make sure that if the lighting is poor, that we bring it up where folks can see where they're walking. And stairs and handrails, I see a lot of time people when they're going down the the exit and should be holding the handrail, they walk without holding the handrails. The handrails are there for you to hold so you don't slip and fall when you're going downstairs. Be careful of your stepstools and ladders. Make sure they are appropriately setting on level ground so that you don't tumble over off the stool and also the ladder. And improper use of floor mats and runners. Make sure that your floor mats is not have the, you know how it cank up when you step on it sometime? And make sure that it has a base so that it adheres to the floor so that someone won't slip and fall over it. So this is just an overview of Environmental Service System. I know when we first started the contract, Andrew was here, and I don't know if he's still with you or not. But we went through a presentation with Andrew and the team at the time to give them who we are and what we're about. Like I say, I started the company back in nineteen ninety-eight, which is what, twenty-seven, I mean, over twenty-seven years ago now. And when I started the company, I had one employee, and that was myself, twenty-seven years ago. Now, today, we have over thousands of employees that work for us throughout the entire country. Okay, we're a national vendor, and we do anything from Lowe's to Class A office buildings to automotive manufacturers to, you know, airplane plants, where they make airplane parts and all. So over that twenty-seven years, we've grown by leaps and bounds. We have over six hundred and fifty field managers that oversee our entire footprint. Our national team is comprised of ten thousand-plus employees. Client retention is what we are really proud about, which is at about ninety-seven percent. That other three percent is customers that it just didn't work out. And some of that is customers that we actually part ways with because it didn't fit what we wanted to do. And that happens sometimes when you see it's not working out. It's best for us to part ways. But ninety-seven percent client retention is pretty good for what we do. We have twenty-plus offices throughout the United States that manage our entire footprint. And like I say, one of those offices being in the Atlanta area, and I sit in in Charlotte.
Can I can I interrupt you just a second?
Sure.
Do you mind if we ask questions?
Please do.
That is, that is extremely impressive. I think really very impressive. Question about local. What percentage of your employees that service the buildings in Davie County live in Davie County?
It's a good question. We're gonna show you the next couple of slides.
Perfect.
Just giving you a history of the company.
Right, okay.
And then we're gonna get down to the local and Albertans that Davie County.
Thank you.
Okay, so this slide gives you a look at our client partnership and comparable experience to what we currently do for Davie County. One of the ones that I really, or two that I want to point out is the town of Cary and the city of Raleigh. The city of Raleigh, we've been doing business with the city of Raleigh going on seventeen years. We started back seventeen years ago with two facilities, well, actually, three facilities, three of their main buildings. And now we do the entire footprint for the city of Raleigh. That was seventeen years of of service with them. The town of Cary, we are coming up on, I think, our first renewal. So we've been with the town of Cary for three years. Wake County, we've been with Wake County over twenty years. Okay, so the experience in government entity has been very good for us. And all the employees that work at those facilities actually lives in those areas. Okay, one thing that we do do when we go into an area, we don't even bring anybody in. We actually, once we've been awarded the contract, we start looking for folks in that area because we want folks that understand the community, that's in that community, that understand that area to be our employees.
And and all of those folks are employees of yours. They're not ten ninety-nine, they're they're direct employees. So those ten thousand folks that you that are employees, they work directly for you. They're not working for themselves in a some contract.
Those are direct hires.
There will be another group of thousands or so that do a bank in Minot, North Dakota, for example. We can't get to that are labor partners, but direct hire.
Sure.
Like those, I mean, use example like Howard, that'd be direct employees.
Those are direct employees, that is correct.
Somebody dusts all those books.
That's a very large campus, yes, sir.
I know. It's a nice library.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We do the entire campus of Howard University. I was there a couple of weeks ago. We have a project manager, just like Kenny, that runs that entire campus. But we probably have a hundred and fifty employees that works there because there's three shift operations there on that campus. So this is contract management. This is what we look like for Davie County, and you want
So the previous slides show you, you know, give credence to who we are as a company, you know, what we can do to support you at a local level. I mean, I'm out of Atlanta, but we have teams to support Kenny. That's that's the whole purpose of showing you who we are. But it comes down to a local, Kenny Dobson here runs our business day to day. You'll see the next slide or two, we have about seventy-five percent, if not more now, that are from Moxville, Davie County. So Kenny's here to run our site day to day. Tamara is two hours away. At the most, if something happened to Kenny, God forbid that happen, but he's he's two hours away to come support whatever we need here. And I'm more corporate support. My boss lives in Tennessee. We have another group who Brad knows, client relations Jay, to support us for any other things you might need outside of growth or you want to add a school district to your thing, we go to the client relation to support that as well. So we have a robust team at a corporate level to support locally. We want to drive locally, though. That's our goal here. Then we have Mr. Ruth as our as our founder and president of ESS. So how do we go to business? We get awarded contract. We take our vast experience across the company, and we bring it to a local level to train. How do we cover one employee sick, if they're absent? Do we give incentives to them? Yes, we do. We cross-train. That's one of the things we have Tamara locally here. He's gonna come learn what Kenny does, and it's all in the light of ensuring we deliver quality service. So any questions on how we do that? Sometimes you'll see if we're awarded a business that has ten full-time employees, we may have six who work eight hours a night and eight who work four hours a night. So if that person who works four hours a night is sick, the other one can work eight hours and get paid. So we don't lose coverage. So that's that's kind of what we do here to make sure that we're up and running every single day. Kenny's gonna go over now the question you asked earlier about staffing and how we are. This is from most recent thing at the end of the year.
Good morning. Again, I want to say thank y'all for having us. It's a blessing and an honor to be here to represent ESS for Davie County. So what we do, I mean, as you see here, our pie chart is sixty-nine percent Davie County employees. We have a list of those names. So what we have done over the past is we've implemented an incentive that will give the sixty-nine percent of the Davie County employees to help us continue to hire within Davie County. So those incentives are pretty, pretty good, I must say. I'd like to have a little bit of it. It is up to a thousand dollars in one year. That's what I'm saying. Well, they're they're building around here, so it would be nice. But as you see, we are growing that number. So, you know, janitorial can be a revolving door. I am thankful that I have all these employees that really enjoy being here and servicing you all. Of course, that's me and a couple of my employees during our holiday event for Christmas, a couple of incentives. So we we are consistent and persistent about letting employees know we appreciate what they do because I am nothing without them. So those are some ways to to show them that we appreciate them and everything that we do. So for me So I I want to tell you a little bit about what I do for for you all. Of course, I'm a project manager, and we do have a contractor that does the beautiful floors and stuff here. We maintain them throughout the year. My goal and my job is to plan, execute, monitor, control projects, events, new business, employees. I do the new hire training, the onboarding, build client relationships, do weekly inspections, budgeting, managing payroll, create worksheets and checklists, have monthly staff trainings, as Edgar went over with safety, because safety is important. And giving and receiving feedback is is very important. So I am pretty much the buffer between client and staff. And I just want to ensure that we're not overpromising and underdelivering. So being very present, help in need is important. So thank you again for having us, and I appreciate this opportunity.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the rate of pay that the employees are receiving per hour?
Our I don't want to misquote that. Our average pay is around thirteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Yeah, because we we have supervisors.
Just the crew, not including anybody else, this this crew.
No, I'm salary, so it doesn't, it wouldn't include me. But we do also have supervisors that are here in Davie County that provide the coverage when I'm not available.
Are the people, the other individuals hourly or any of them salary?
No, no, sir.
They're hourly?
Hourly.
I think most of your positions are part-time?
Part-time. We have a few full-time staffers, but yes, the supervisors and the day porters, so. Thank y'all.
Just one little click on the the incentive that was mentioned was for, if an employee lives in really anywhere but Moxville, Davie County resident, if they refer an employee after not a day, they get two hundred and fifty dollars out of our pocket. After six months, another two fifty. If that employee stays on for a year, the referring employee gets five hundred dollars. So it's a thousand dollars within a year. That's what that's we find our best help is someone who knows somebody. So we use that to drive our team to be local and also just find people to work because post-pandemic, it's really hard to find good quality work. But that's the best way for us to, that we found works for us.
Mr. Ruth?
And one of the things I want to mention about the incentive too is, and I, Brad, you might have been here when that happened. I came on, I came to the area back during COVID, and one of the employees was paid five thousand dollars as an incentive bonus for something we were doing during COVID. I remember presenting that check to her for five thousand dollars. So those are the kind of things that we do. Look, I started in the cleaning business in high school. And I said to myself, when I finish college, there ain't no way I'm gonna be cleaning floors. Well, it's been forty-something years later, and I'm still cleaning floors. Okay? But I say that to say this, that I understand the cleaning business. I understand what the cleaners go through. I used to clean the toilets, still clean the toilets. I understand emptying the trash can. I used to strip floors while I was in college. I actually worked in the mornings cleaning department stores, went to school during the day, and in the afternoon, I worked part-time cleaning office buildings. So I understand when I we say, or I say, here's what we need to do to keep that customer happy. That is so important to me because I grew up in the cleaning business. And, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Ruth, for that. So one of the things we like to do is develop our frontline employees, the supervisors, the managers. So if if we get the chance, we find a diamond in the rough, right, a superstar, and we can grow with the company, grow with Davie County. We like to promote from within. Tamara Johnson started out as a cleaner at Wake County, went to supervisor as we grew. He went to salary site manager, and now is an operations manager. Twenty years he's been there, he's went up, but he's local there. We would love to do that here. Find people on your staff, on our staff, who are hourly employees. So we get a new building, we find from within, promote from within, and we train them. We send them to a LEAP training in Birmingham or Tampa to learn about leadership, how to work with employees, how to handle conflict management. So we'd love the opportunity to do that. But we have a great story here in the room where local employee in Raleigh just grew and grew and grew with these, and is fourth role now. I love that kind of story, you know? So we'd love to have that here with you. But we do have training in place to make sure that if someone does get promoted, that we do take the right steps to train them so they can lead the team and offer a great service to you. And we use innovation to help us get better and better.
Just a little bit more about training also is is that that was one of the reasons why I started Environmental Services System. The company that I'd worked for for many years, I was an executive, Senior Vice President of a four billion-dollar operation. Had corporate was UK, but they had a presence in the United States. But when I started ESS, it was about training because a lot of companies don't train their employees. They hire them, they put them in the building and say, now go clean, based on your experience you had from another company. Some good, some bad. We want to make sure we control what that experience is like. Okay? So that's one of the reasons we put so much emphasis on training. A lot of companies don't believe that people need training in cleaning. If you clean your house, it's a whole different kind of cleaning. So we don't mind spending money on employees going to learn about training. Like Joey said, we have the LEAP program. That's pretty much geared toward the management team. But when we talk about job rotation and OJT and all of that, that's for the cleaning staff. Okay? Job rotation is is important to us because if we have someone out, we need to know that someone else can step up and do that person's job because everybody on the cleaning staff have a different job to do. But we want everybody to know everybody's job. So if somebody's out, we don't miss a beat. We just continue to move on. Innovation, so big in the cleaning industry these days. We actually have a Senior Vice President that oversee innovation for us. When we talk about robotics, when we talk about AI, all of the things that are coming at us now in twenty twenty-five, we have to be on our A-game all the time. So innovation or vacuum cleaners that comes in that we set up in a building, if the area is right, because it has to be open, that can actually go vacuum the floor, then go back to his docking station until the next afternoon, and then come back out and do the same thing. Now, that does help us on labor, okay? But that is important because one thing, as long as that room have power, that machine is gonna work. We don't have to worry about that machine not coming to work. We don't have to worry about that machine not coming to work, okay? So that's one of the reasons that we're looking at like autonomous scrubbers. Just like if you walk into Walmart, some of you have been in a Walmart, most Walmarts have them now where the scrubber is going around scrubbing the floors and there's nobody on the scrubber. You just gotta have somebody to make sure it gets some water when time for it to be, it needed to be refilled or dumped. And they have autonomous scrubbers now that it dumps itself, okay? We ain't there yet, but we do have autonomous scrubbers in some of our automotive manufacturer or some of our big warehouses that we clean uh throughout the United States that does that. Uh, sprayers, when COVID was at its peak, uh, we have these machines that goes in, that we set up in a building mainly in your conference areas, uh, that's wide open. Comes out, spray the room and go back to the docking station. And as long as we set what time we wanted to come out and do it, it comes out and it does that every night, okay? Uh, so those are the kind of things that we're looking at uh as we continue to move forward in uh this business and look, and trying to stay on the cutting edge of innovation. Because that is so important now when you're talking about uh the cleaning industry. I think that's the last slide. Okay, uh, if, are there any questions?
I, I just have a couple. I know other folks do. Uh, in terms of um, in terms of your investment in Davie County, you know, we, we understand we're sending revenues to Charlotte, to Raleigh, to, to Winston-Salem, to Atlanta. What, what is your doc, raw dollar investment back into Davie County? Not personnel. Not personnel. That's, that's an investment in your business. I'm talking about an investment in Davie County. Uh, our local folks that would, would uh, would ask to bid these jobs, they give to Little League, they give to the Davie Community Park, they give to our schools, they give, uh, you name it. Can you tell me what is your raw dollar investment back in Davie County in terms of uh those types of things? Not your staffing.
Right.
Today's zero, but six months, it won't be zero.
Yeah.
So, detract that. It's a great question.
Well, well, Mr. Sherman, that is something we definitely need to look at because I will say that in, in, in other areas where we do business, we always want to look for opportunities to give back uh to the area to help out. So that's something we would definitely take back and look at.
And we love the opportunity to, to do that. I mean, if we don't know, we don't know. So that's a great, great question.
Well, the, and, and, and that is great. How long have you been here in Davie County now?
Uh, I think this, we're in our fourth year.
Fourth year, okay.
We did three and then we just renewed.
Okay.
Oh, six, six years? Okay.
Six years. Okay, I, I have a second question, then I'll let some other guys uh, and ladies uh talk. You're a very large company, okay, competing against our uh local vendors that do business. Do you get government funding at the corporate level, grants, federal dollars, anything to offset some of this innovation you're talking about? You get no federal dollars.
None, zero.
All right.
We're a large company, but we always want to have that family feel. Well, I came from a small town in, in South Carolina where I grew up. My first job was working in the tobacco field, okay?
Mine too.
So, so, you know, cropping tobacco, you know, during the summer, that's how I made my summer money. And then I picked cotton, so I, I get it, I get it, I get it.
Well, and I would say to you this, uh, we have, you, you have a new contract.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and we don't build this into our contracts. I don't know if we can, but you, there, there are, our parks and rec guys here, our school system is not here today, Brian knows, Karen knows, we all know of ways that you can invest in the citizens and the kids of Davie County.
Sure.
Uh, so I would just ask that you be more intentional about that as you move, move forward and.
Definitely will.
Uh, so other questions, guys and ladies?
Just got one question back to the employees, the employees that like you showed, the local camp people and the people from Lexington. They're all, are they all part-time or most of them part-time uh in?
So, yes, most, most of them are part-time um that are outside of Davie County because they have other jobs.
And then like the others in Davie County may.
Majority of those are full-time. Majority of those are full-time.
Can you say how many, how many, number one, you have, you have seventeen people here, right?
I had to look at the names. Um, two, three, four. Out of uh seventeen, eight are full-time.
Okay.
When you say full-time, they full-time to, they do things, I mean, do they do more with y'all's business with other?
No, it's all, it's all, it's all here, yeah.
And in regards to that, the eight, I know the nine that are part-time get no benefits, right?
No, sir.
Okay, the, the eight that are full-time, do they get uh what type of benefit?
Vacation.
Health, health insurance?
Well, yes, yes, it's available to them if, if they choose to.
And they pay it?
We're all eligible for it for full-time, whether we choose to accept it or not, that's.
Right, sure, sure.
Do they get 401K or any kind of match or anything like that?
Our employees do not.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for being here. Uh, just, just a wonderful story all up and down the line. Uh, uh, and we really, we really appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. This is great insight for us to partner better, to understand the partnership and what it's about. It's typically, we don't get this type of audience to offer feedback and we're gonna take it, you, you know, to heart. We do have, for example, though, just so you know, we do do a lot in the, we do other business in other states, right? We do have a school district in Mississippi where we do partner, we do sponsor their football team, their baseball team. So our name is there, but it's a good partnership. So this is really good to understand. It's good for you to expect things from us and we appreciate the candor. At least I do.
Well, and I would just say this, at thirteen sixty-eight average wage, you know, that's kind of go- and I don't know what the market bears in, in your mar- in, in your marketplace, but um, you know, that uh, that probably could use some work too, but it's just my opinion.
That is not a livable wage here.
Okay, that's good to know.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for your time.
Anything else?
I would add real quick, Mr. Chairman, um, if you guys have a minute to stick around, one of our presentations today is about sponsorships with our recreation. Um, so if you don't have to run out, uh, we welcome you to stick around for a minute or two.
I have to run out, but can you guys, you guys say the?
Yeah, can you stick around? All right.
Local team will stay here.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just to kind of close that out, you know, internally, just, you know how that system works. So we have an internal uh work order system. Kenny's on there as a provider. So anytime that a department head or director employee has an issue with, whether it be a spill, hazmat, you know, they put in a work order and that goes directly to Kenny and it's dispatched. That's how they're dispatched during the day.
Hey Brad, brief question. How long is the contract, this, this new contract for? I'm sorry.
Current one is just like the old one, three years.
Three more years.
It's reviewed every, every, every year term. It's reviewed, adjusted. If we need to make adjustments, we can, but the initial.
Are we about a year in?
Yeah, we're a year in. We, so we had delayed time there in awarding. It started in September.
Okay.
So we've, we'll pick up the new contract for year two, start July one.
All right, thank you.
All right, well.
Brian?
Brad? Brad's still up.
Yeah, y'all get a lot of me this morning, so y'all are lucky, but uh, so just to give you a little bit of history on uh what this next presentation is gonna be about. So about six months ago, I received a phone call in my office from an individual who works through a consulting firm about our county ADA transition plan. So I, I listened, you know, took some notes, hung up the phone and started searching to see where our transition plan is and how long it's been since it's been updated. And to find out, we don't have a plan. Uh, so that's just a little background of why this is coming for you right now. Uh, this is just a little bit of history, a little bit of requirements of what uh Title II is, the ADA transition plan.
Brad, could I interrupt you real quickly? I was watching these gentlemen leave the room and who did you say contacted you? I'm not asking specific.
Consulting firm, you know, something like, you know, how we done our facility space study, Mosley come in. They come in, offered, hey, we're updating plans, we're gonna come in, provide a service to get the final product of the transition plan.
Thank you.
So as most of you probably know, you know, in, in July of nineteen ninety, President Bush Senior signed into law the American Disability Act or the ADA, which is Civil Rights Act to prohibit discrimination against people with disabilities inside of facilities of public use. It was revised a few times uh in two thousand eight, two thousand ten, uh, the Title II regulations. All that information there is below to reference. In Title II regulations, uh, there's five parts of that that are requirements. Up here today, I only have four, the fifth being uh technology. And prior to John Gallimore's departure, in the last probably year and a half he was here, he was working on that, as you noticed on our website. A little blue icon down there that you can hit, that's, that's part of this plan is the technology piece, which we have in place. That is the only section we have in place. The other four parts here, uh, ADA coordinators required, public entity with fifty employees are required to designate at least one employee as a coordinator. The next is a grievance procedure. Uh, that needs to be public, uh, kind of like our contract control form with complaints or grievances. Uh, you need to have a specific ADA grievance portion of your website and form. And the last two are self-evaluation and the transition plan. I have those highlighted in red because those are the ones that I'm really gonna key on today. Uh, this is where we really need to start looking at uh what we need to do. So section or chapter thirty-five, section one oh five is a self-evaluation. Uh, this is uh to evaluate current services, policies, practice and effects thereof that do not or may not meet the requirements of this part to the extent modification of any such services, policies, practices required. As you can see, this was written, written by politicians and legal. Uh, but understanding it, uh, you need to have a list of interested persons consulted in the committee. Uh, you gotta establish a committee through the coordinator. Uh, you need to have the surveys. You need to have areas examined with any problems identified and description modifications that need to be made. Next portion there is the transition plan, chapter thirty-five, one oh five D. I've highlighted some areas there that this plan is required to be more of an executive summary, identifying uh physical obstacles, the detailed methods to make the facilities accessible, a specific schedule to follow and the implementation. Here are the standards you go by when you do your self-evaluation and transition plan, uh, references uh chapter thirty-five of the ADA, two thousand four guidelines, and then that equals the two thousand ten renovation or uh modification of ADA standards for accessible design. So this is your standard ADA building code or requirements. You know, most new facilities prior or after two thousand ten fall into these guidelines that they have to meet that just standard building code, just like our North Carolina building code. But as you know, most of our buildings are predated two thousand ten. Our county park, the government center, our new EMS, EMS stations had to meet all these requirements when we renovated and built. So they're pretty good, but you know, we have twenty-eight locations, three are two thousand ten or later. So we have a lot of facilities that really need to be reviewed with obstacles and concerns with uh accessibility. Here are just a few examples of what that ADA standard codes look like from that previous slide. Uh, you're looking at parking lots, you're looking at handicap spaces, you're looking at ramps, uh, access to our buildings, you're looking at restrooms, grab bars, tissue heights. I mean, you can just see, and this is just a portion of what ADA compliance is. And this with that self-evaluation, you go through every facility and check off all those requirements.
Just real quick, I want to really, I want to clarify here. A consultant contact you, contacted you and initiated this discussion.
Correct.
No one from a government entity, Department of Justice, uh, contacted you to initiate this discussion?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and following up and doing my research to try to find these transition plans, you know, I reached out to some of my peers and colleagues, looked at other surrounding counties, a lot of counties do not have it. Where you'll find the transition plans are mainly in the municipalities. That being that a large requirement is sidewalks and rightaways. And most municipalities, if you noticed last year, the town of Moxville was building some of the sidewalks, the lips. That's called their transition plan. Uh, I'm not sure if they've got it fully in place, but that's what that was. Uh, like I said, you'll see it a lot in municipalities, but it is required for municipalities and local governments. You know, you just to give an example here, like, you know, if we have an ADA complaint for this lectern, your public comments, I mean, how are you gonna accommodate someone in a wheelchair to come and speak? We don't have that available now. Downstairs, some of our counter heights that are tax collections, they've got to be a thirty-six inch minimum. This is what you see at most ADA compliant counters, like our county park, you go in there and see the circulation desk, there's two different counter heights. We're post-two thousand ten, that is the requirement, that is an ADA compliant counter. We have a lot of facilities and a lot of public service pieces that do not meet that now. So here's just a kind of quick example of self-evaluation. Uh, we done the Dodge building down there. We were looking at, uh, we house public utilities, development services and general services. You need to review the parking area, the handicap, slope, signage, exterior and interior. Uh, that building has no sidewalks. Exterior and interior building signage needs to be at certain heights, certain levels, certain font, certain size. Uh, walk-up counters, as I mentioned, like down here, uh, height requirements, public restrooms and pathways of destruction. And this is the portion of the transition plan that is dealing with the public accessibility and admittance. This is not looking at our employees' workspace. As we do a self-evaluation plan, it probably is recommended that we look at that moving forward so we know, you know, our employees, our staffing, those spaces are also compliant. Another thing we have to look at, like go back to policies and programming, so we just, I just took, for example, the Recreation and Parks Programming Event. You know, they hold their mobile rec days off-site at different locations. Uh, so is this location where these different events and other sites? Yes, all right, yes, then they must uh have access to the facility's accessibility and meet ADA regulations. Unless they're providing the same program at a different location that meets ADA requirements. So in doing that self-evaluation, we'll not only look at the buildings, you'll be meeting with your department heads and anyone doing programs or activities outside of our facilities. Uh, you know, senior center does things off-site, HHS has uh things off-site. So you'd have to look at what's being provided as a service and is it provided somewhere else that meets the ADA requirements or that site must be ADA compliant. This is just a, a timeline to give you some heads up of what I've seen in some of the transition plans. You know, I'm getting this before you today in March, you know, if you, between now and May, establish a ADA committee, appoint a coordinator. Between May and August, that committee, community engagement and surveys. And then starting early summer through spring of next year, you would be performing your ADA self-evaluation or facility assessment. May of twenty-six, be a board presentation presenting the executive summary of the transition plan, all the obstacles, instructions that were identified with the cost, budget and estimating. And then in July two thousand six, will be the implementation of year one of the ADA transition plan CIP improvements. So the last piece of the transition plan is, you've got to implement. So the last piece of the transition plan is, you've gotta implement a plan to fix it. You know, not to put a financial strain or burden on the county if you can't do it all at once. I mean, I've seen some of these transition plans, I mean, you're talking millions of dollars. Uh, Rowan County has one, uh, they're one of the few counties around us that have a current and up-to-date transition plan. And that's a, close to a thousand-page document. So it is a long-term goal and fix, it's not a overnight fix to every facility. But this is the initiation and process to get us in compliance with ADA Title II. And, uh, you know, as we look at future growth in our facilities or programming, you know, this is a vital piece moving forward as we add buildings, add programming or services, that needs to be the first piece we look at. Is it accessible? Is it gonna meet all ADA Title II requirements before proceeding to build, buy or add services? So, any questions? Now, that was a fire hose, but...
I, I just have one question in terms of our facilities where we are customer front, not talking about employees at this point. Haven't we made them all, uh, accessible? I mean, I know Board of Elections, uh, Health Department, Sheriff's Department, this building, uh, have they, are they not all? Give me an example where we're not.
Okay, I mean, just like I said...
Not a counter.
Counter, but that's part of this.
Yeah.
That's part of it, you know, uh, you know, the reason we moved out of the corporate extension building, ADA restrooms. And there's no elevator up or down to the first, bottom or third floor, that's a facility. Uh, we look at...
But we accommodated, we have accommodated that by moving out of that building into a facility that is ADA compliant.
Correct, because we had renovations that we had to meet those building code standards. But where we haven't done any renovations or major changes, you know, right now, we're working on the third floor of the courthouse to be ADA compliant. Uh, that was one project that was identified in the renovations, Public Library. That, that front entrance, per code, does not meet ADA compliance.
What about the, um, but is a lot of it like entrances or countertops like Registered Deeds Tax Office, that type thing? Would that be considered part of it? I'm just using that cause of my frame of reference.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're, you're gonna take every facility, you know, we done an in-house self-evaluation of that Dodge building. It took us roughly an hour and a half to go through the public side of making a transaction. As soon as you pull in our parking lot until you pay that water bill and leave, if you have to use the restroom while you're there.
What if you don't, I'm not trying to be smart, but what if you don't have a countertop the way your office is set up? Are you supposed to create a countertop or does that matter or?
Just where you have transactions that are needed, you know, if you're providing, for, for me to come up and, and operate and function as a citizen of the county, to do business with the county, I come up, we have that transaction, you need to have the equivalent of that to be accessible for ADA compliance if those transactions happen with other individuals.
I have two questions, I kinda build on each other, but understanding we need this plan, um, up to this point, so we get the plan in place, what do we do with it? We post it, we put it on the website, it's in Brian's office, if somebody shows up and says, where's your plan, we can present it.
Yeah, most of the ones I've found and reading into the regulations, you know, it's, it's provided electronically and it's housed with the clerk, just as your budget would be. Taking the transition plan, it must be implemented into some ratification of fixing those issues. That's where you would implement, you know, not know anything, but if you implemented seventy-five thousand dollars a year in our CIP plan or whatever we think we could afford, you know, that year, we would take, you know, the transition plan's gonna list high priority, medium and low priorities of what needs to be done first. We would do that as we could afford it through our CIP planning.
Wait, that's the second part of my question, which you've kind of answered a couple times, I guess, but there is no finite time to implement this.
No. There was, I mean, in nineteen ninety-two, you would have this in place.
So my question is, why hasn't it been being worked on? I mean, why is it take, why did it take a phone call from a consultant to turn on this light?
You know, that was pre, pre my day, I mean, I was still in, I think, uh, elementary school in ninety-two. But I think it's just fallen through the cracks of it's been so long, two thousand ten was the last modification that no one picked up on it. Like I said, I had no idea what they were asking for, you know, I just answered some simple questions, took some notes, done the research. And here's where we are, and I am no expert in ADA, it's just, I picked up the phone that day and found out about it.
So with a consultant in mind, if they're calling, what, do they provide you some templates, some guidance? Is there a cost that they've given you associated with helping to like achieve this?
Yeah, so the best thing to compare it to would be that facility space study, um, y'all performed in two thousand seventeen with Mosley. You know, they're coming in, they've got templates that have all these codes, that they come in and do a checklist, take measurements, take photos, assess, identify, and then give a budget estimate. You know, in talking and them in conversation, cause I did have some follow-up, uh, you know, this could be bid out or we could piggyback on a contract if we wish to go with a consulting firm. So I was able to get some numbers comparable to our size, I mean, you're looking at a fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar consulting fee to get the tran, the final transition plan in place to be implemented in the CIP.
Okay, so when we did the government center and the new EMS station and things like that, we obviously knew that we were supposed to meet ADA compliance. Why did that not turn on the light bulb that our older buildings were not meeting and who made those determinations?
You know, like I said, you know, moving forward, the, the new stuff is construction meeting two thousand ten requirements. You know, the issue at the library, I've identified a few ADA issues, they have been submitted as projects. They haven't made the cut.
So I would, I would, I would answer your question by saying that in all my time, I've never, when, when Brad approached me about looking into this project, this was really the first time that it had come to my attention to do an ADA, um, study. Usually with ADA, it's after something has happened, you know, we have had a situation that, that, uh, a citizen or I would say probably a vast majority of our ADA conversations when it comes to disabilities are gonna be on the employee side, making sure that we are able to accommodate to an employee or potential employee who may have a disability. You don't really look at the public side until you are typically addressed by the public. So one of the things I wanted Brad to make sure he looked into, which is kinda going back to Mark's first, Chairman's first question, uh, where does it say we have to do this? What law, what regulation, and that's what Brad did some more additional research to determine that because, again, in, in all of my years, this is usually an identified issue during your capital improvement program. Um, primarily, I mean, like with the case with the Public Library, looking at ramps and access, wheelchair access is usually the main driver of this conversation. But, you know, we, we felt that finding the regulations and the laws that says that, you know, once you have fifty more employees, we should be looking into something like this. You know, we went ahead and looked into it more to get to this point. And to Commissioner Renninger's question, I mean, there is no timetable because it has to be affordable. Uh, obviously, we can identify any needs, but obviously, we gotta stack those up against everything else that we have to and required to pay for. So, um, we wanted to make sure if we move forward in doing this, that you are aware of it. So that a year from now, if we show up with a budget request and you're like, and we're telling you that it's, uh, ADA compliance issues, at least we have that understanding of where that's coming from.
Just a brief question, um, uh, just to kinda bring this all into play here, since nineteen ninety-two. Uh, and I know you were in elementary school, you, you, you told us that. I'm going to assume the answer to this. Have we had a complaint that would, uh, be addressed by this?
Not to my knowledge, you mentioned the Board of Elections earlier, so five or six years ago, I believe, I went around at every voting site. It was required, well, we go around and do that checklist for the voting sites, we made corrections, uh, some of that was ramping, curb height difference, uh, so there has been things that we've looked at. Yeah, so the issue at the library is the width of the ramp going up and then the configuration of the columns out front. Do not provide the space to open the door within a wheelchair radius. And there's no power push button. Power push button, the columns are in the way. So what, the, the project for there is to remove those columns, extend that platform, redo that ramp and take the steps from coming directly into the path of travel.
But then also state that a lot of your ADA issues, there, not every solution is, uh, a capital need. I know in the case of elections, you know, if you have a disability and are unable to come into the facilities, you know, um, they can bring the, the ballot out to you to vote, um, and that would help with that particular disability. So that's not necessarily, it's, it, there's some costs, but it's not a, a fixed cost like it would be on a facility. So, uh, we have to keep in mind that disability by definition can mean a lot of different things. Doesn't, I mean, wheelchair access is one we usually think of first, but, um, but some of the fixes that could be identified may not have that big dollar cost that's needed to check off that box.
And this building here, for example, with your, uh, countertops down on the first floor, the Registered Deeds and also the Tax Office where they make the payments, there's also a door there that someone who's in a wheelchair and I'll, you have access back into the inner area to make those payments versus you only have a countertop and if they can't reach that countertop, they can't make their payments.
Does anybody have any other questions for Brad? I just got a quick one, um, I, I probably don't wanna know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask you. The, um, so what happens, I mean, obviously, if we have a complaint, we fix it if it's justified. But what if we don't? I mean, I guess we're working on the plan, but what, I mean, is some big bureaucrat gonna show up and fine us? I mean, I really am trying to understand what the practical issue here is.
I would, uh, kinda revert that question to Ed based on grievances. You know, now that we've been made aware of it, we've identified it, we are working toward a solution to become fully compliant. Uh, that's kind of, for legal terms, you know, we're working on it, we know about it, we've got a plan, we're doing it as we aff, can afford it. Just setting aside now that we've kinda know about it, made aware, um, I would think you would have more legal ramifications if a grievance happens from this point. Now, from someone coming in from Doge and coming in and saying, hey, you're supposed to have this, we're gonna find you, there is a calculation within that act that, that I, I haven't dove into that to see what the fines would be, but there are fines that could be associated with that by not having one in place.
If you're not working on it, you can be fined.
I don't know if that's retroactive from ninety-two to today, or I don't, I don't know that. I mean, like I said, I, I found about this five months ago and I've done enough research to get this in front of, kinda give you a heads up of, hey, here's what we need, here's some of the requirements, here's some of the steps we need, need to start taking.
Any other questions?
I do have one question. So it really seems to me that the library would have to be closed during that renovation process.
You know, we've talked and, you know, Derek and I, like I said, we, we identified that one probably two or three years ago. You know, we've got plans that we'd probably enter in through the, the back entrance, cause we have a ramp back there that meets requirements, it's wide enough, it's big enough.
Okay.
We've got that door there, uh, so...
So the back door is ADA compliant?
Yes. That's just cause, I mean, the columns, the columns out front and the architectural that was done is in the way.
But if the back door is ADA compliant, would we not be okay?
That door stays locked, that's employee entrance.
Oh, well, then that maybe could be... Be a whole lot cheaper to change that. It would be a whole lot cheaper for the rear entrance to be that, to be that entrance than to redo that front.
And this is what that plan's gonna identify, like you said, like I said, if you have an entrance that's not, you have another one that's available.
Yeah.
Possibly, but then you don't have someone back there, then you're coming through staff work areas. So then we gotta look at, uh, protrusions out into the path of travel. There's lockers back there, there's storage back there, there's coffee makers, so then we've gotta take all that stuff out. Then we gotta find more space for the library, so this is just a domino chain event of things that are gonna have to be corrected.
Yeah, those are things of convenience though, not things of mass expense. So that's, that's to be hard looked at, I think.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you. Alright, Paul.
Well, since Brad started off with a funny, I'll just say you got aged before beauty. Going to introduce to you, uh, today, our corporate sponsorship and advertising policy. I'm sure most of you have, uh, uh, seen it already. Uh, I want to tell you a little bit of the reason for the, the policy. Is to create a set of guidelines that we can follow, uh, when it comes to corporate sponsorship and advertising. And it gives us the guidelines and the consistency moving, uh, from the policy forward to be able to understand who and what, uh, sponsorships are for and their meaning, um, for our agency and our community. So naturally, with all, uh, any of our policy requirements, there's a statement of, of, of the policy or, and a purpose and some definitions. I won't bore you with that, I wanna get to the meat of the pro, uh, meat of the, um, of the policy itself. So, uh, that's self-explanatory of, of why we need it and how park and recreation agencies have, have come to use, uh, these policies and, and, um, create, uh, some additional revenue sources. I do want to move down. Standard definitions, things that, that, that need to be in there. Purpose. Again, we're setting standards, guidelines, criterias for solicitation and acceptance of sponsorships. Um, protective missions of our agency and our organization. Uh, protect the county from risk and safeguard facilities and services from any sponsorship advertising that will compromise, damage public trust. Uh, create a productive method of generating non-labor associated revenue while allowing local businesses, entities the opportunity to invest in our community. Recognize that it's not applicable to situations where external funds can be a result of gifts, grants, that's, that's standard. Uh, provide suitable methods of acknowledgement, uh, to partner contributions. Uh, again, not promotion, we're not promoting, we are advertising. To ensure fair public process for consideration of sponsorship, uh, provide ca, County of Davie the final decision-making authority on any sponsorship opportunity, thus protecting public trust. And to guide potential sponsors and staff to better understand the process, procedure, uh, for sponsorship and advertising. Criteria. I will say, getting into the meat of this, uh, we took this policy from two, uh, a mesh of two agencies that have had this policy or their policies, one since two thousand and two, the other one since two thousand and ten. So longstanding policies, it was great that I didn't have to completely recreate the, the will, but wanted to make sure that it, it fit for Davie County. So criteria, uh, as the, as the policy reads, prohibited materials include a materials feature endorsing representing alcohol, uh, endorsing representing tobacco products, illegal drugs that are used, endorsing representing sexually oriented products, materials. Materials that contain political issues, stances, endorsements of candidates or campaigns, uh, materials containing profanity, obscenity, hate speech or any other socially and morally questionable content that is intentional. All advertisements representing religious entities are welcome, but the advertisement cannot contain religious slogans, messages or phrases. Advertisement signage must comply with the Town of Moxville and Ca, and County of Davie sign ordinance and recreation... Advertisement signage must comply with the town muscle and county Davie sign ordinance and recreation park ordinances.
I want to do one of my petty betties, Paul.
Sure.
So if a religious entity cannot contain a slogan, message, or phrase, then it can't have the word church in it. So how is a church going to advertise if they can't?
Church can be fine.
Just saying that doesn't match your definition.
Church, church can be fine. So if it's, uh, I'll, I'll give you, well, we can get into examples. We want to get.
We don't have to. I'm just pointing that out. You know, I love to point out the details.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So levels of sponsorship, this is, this is key. So Board of Commissioner approval required. Offers of sponsorship including naming rights of park amenities that for terms of multiple years and are projected to generate more than fifteen thousand in total or exceed more than five thousand and one dollars in any individual year or of a multi-year term sponsorship agreement. That would go to Board of Commissioner. County manager approval level, level two, offers sponsorship that are two to five year terms that are projected to generate five thousand or less in any individual year. The approval includes the authority to approve naming rights of park amenities through sponsorship agreements which monetary value fits within the limit of level two. A county manager may refer any sponsorship agreement of a level two to the Board of Commissioner. And I will say that provision is in there. So when it becomes to a naming right, naturally, Brian's going to refer that up to you. Because guess what? We already have a naming rights policy. And that's why we have it. Uh, and then agency director approval required. Offers of sponsorship that consists of only a one-year term and is projected to generate two thousand five hundred and one or less within the agreement. This approval does not include the authority to approve sponsorship for naming rights. The agency director may refer any sponsorship agreement of a level one to the county manager for approval. Public access to the sponsorship, naturally, we will have have that information yearly. What's interesting is as we transition into this, is this policy once is approved, we will, we will have our advisory board recommend and approve our sponsorship levels every year. One of the things that's very important, I do want to go back to, that's going to be key. Up here in definite, uh, up here at the beginning, you're going to see. I gotta find it now. Here we go. Value-based pricing and market-based pricing. It's something I'm, I'm getting, I'm now in a two oh one educational system on. Naturally, we, we, most park and recreation agencies look at what's market value of things, what's market value of things. But as we get into corporate sponsorship, we don't need to know just what the market value. What is the value-based pricing of a certain amenity or a certain program? So for example, the market value of a, um, a banner in your gyms may be five thousand dollars for a year. But you got to look at what is the actual value base? How many people actually come to that gym and see that banner up there every single day? Not just the, not just the league game days, but all year round. How many totals, so many corporates, corporate entities want to give you a market value and think that is fair, which really in, in, in many cases is not true. So what I will propose to do is, um, first thing I'd like to do, kind of, is take our amenities and link up with a consultant that's going to give you, give us a true value-based price, not a market, but get us a market base, but a, also a value-based price for the amenity that we have in our area. So that when corporate entities come to us and say, well, we want to give you two thousand dollars for three years for our, um, for our scoreboard at the stadium, we can come back and say, well, two thousand dollars is a fair market, but it's not, it's not the actual value of what that is. So it's, it's being smart with, making sure that we are representative of what the actual value of an amenity really costs. It's just a smart way of thinking, but also lets the corporate entity realize what that true value is, just not just based upon what they do everywhere else. What they do everywhere else may be different than here. Sponsorship negotiation, so level one sponsorship costs are predetermined and set by the Recreation Park Advisory Board. These costs are determined using market-based pricing methods. We just talked about that. Level two and level three, this will be important for you guys. Sponsorship negotiating in conjunction with the county manager and agency director. These costs will use value-based price methods. Potential sponsoring county will, shall discuss monetary amounts and benefits until both parties settle on a mutual agreement.
Question?
Yes.
If, uh, for, I, you, you use for example, um, you do banners on the ball field, on the fence. You come up with a set, you, you guys come up with a set pricing. You're not asking, uh, environmental services to pay one thing and a local, uh, a local dry cleaner to pay a second thing for the same.
Correct.
Fee.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
For the same type of fundraiser.
Correct.
Yep.
No haggle pricing.
I like that. And again, upon receive, um, we'll go into agreement based upon the, the level requirements to be executed. The county will not make any statements that directly or indirectly advocate, endorse, sponsor their products or services. Again, we have the right to sell advertisement. We're not promoting. And there's a reason for that, a, a very specific reason. We all know why. No material communications included but not limited to print media, uh, video, internet broadcast or display items developed to promote, communicate sponsorship without our, with our seal logo can, can't be done without our express permission from the county manager. And the appeal process, a denial, if we ever run into a situation where we deny, run something up for any of level of sponsorship can be appealed. Again, there's a due process to the agency director and county manager and the Board of Commissioners. And you, as a board, decision shall be final on that.
So the, the hierarchy would be your staff would make a decision on the sponsorship. It would go, would your board get involved if it was a gray area?
Absolutely. Any, this is, this is the reason why we have level one, level two, level three. And you'll see under each one of the agency director may refer any sponsorship of agreement to a level one, to the county manager. County manager come to the board. If there's ever a gray area, absolutely, it'll, it'll run up the chain. And I think that's just being consistent. What we want to make sure, what we want to make sure is to maintain consistency with the guideline criteria. Any potential pause or gray area with regard to the sponsorship application must be referred to the next level. As far as gray areas, I, I, I will say this. I had a chance to talk to both Kerry, Kernersville, which we recently saw, uh, church, a church on some of their events and asked them, how often do you get these? It's not often. It's not often, but we stick to our guidelines and, and it's very consistent. As long as you maintain your consistency, you're going to be fine.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I, I, I heard Terry ask, what was the level of involvement of your board?
Yep.
Not us up the line.
Okay.
At the level of.
Of our, of our involvement in the board. So they set the pri, the market pricing for the sponsorship. Anything that goes, anything that, anything that, uh, I would think is a level two can reach them. If we have something that's in the gray area, I'm going to take it to my board as always. Because I think that's just, that is a best practice to do.
So your first step in the process of a gray area or whatever it might be, negotiation, whatever, is your board.
Advisor board, absolutely.
But that would be determined by you.
Hmm?
But, but that determination of whether it's gray or not is up to you.
Yes, and, and that's what, that's what an agency director is hired for.
Yeah, I mean.
If, if they don't have, if, if myself and, and anybody after me doesn't have the, have it the, the compass, uh, the ethical compass to think about those things, then they don't need to be an agency director. Anytime there's a gray area. There's that confidence and trust factor of when you know to take things to the next level.
Paul, do you foresee the sponsorship going through a process similar to like a contract?
Yes, they all will go through a contract.
So in theory, any contract that Paul would submit would have to go through several internal folks. So in a gray area, I, I guess really to answer your question, to give you some type of reassurance, it's going to see a couple of people and.
That's really.
One of us, somebody in that process, um, may also find it to be a gray area and start those conversations. So it may not be great to Paul, but it may be great to me or may be great to Ed. You know, we're going to talk.
And that was my concern. It's not, it's not saying you're not competent enough to make that decision, but we all have personal opinions.
Absolutely.
Personal opinions may differ, so.
Yeah. And that's why, that's why it's important if you, if, if there's something that's going to be in a gray area, whether it's a light gray, medium gray, or dark gray area, it's, it's best to have eyes, multiple eyes on it, not just one. Because, because we're thinking about, and I'm, I'm not only thinking about our agency, I'm thinking about our entire organization of Davie County.
Paul, may I ask a question or a comment? A comment more. Don't we need to clean those levels up like range wise, like anything, it really needs to be something like between anything above twenty-five hundred to five thousand and anything, you know, those ranges because twenty-five oh one and all.
That, that, it, I've seen that, but sometimes you get into even dollar amounts.
Right.
And you automatically are at another level when it doesn't need to be. That's why I had twenty-five oh one right there, just to make sure any five thousand oh one. So you're never going to see that, but just as a matter of practical terms, if something at five thousand, it's automatic level two. Well, it may be, you know.
I'm just saying, if you said the range was between twenty-five hundred and five thousand, because you've basically given that third level below twenty-five hundred, just.
Twenty-five hundred and below.
Yeah, just that needs, I just, I would clean that section up a little bit to make it ironclad.
Right.
And I'd also add that you all will get a copy of this. So if there's any other points or ideas that we need to add. The plan is to officially approve it at our next meeting on April seventh. But any feedback, um, we would gladly factor in to this new policy.
And we, we don't have, Karen, we don't have the draft yet. We do have it. I thought so. Yeah.
So you, you have that to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah. In, in full disclosure, I have a duty, also have a duty to, to let you know through the advisor board that vote came in at seven, one, two. That was seven, four, one against, and two that were not present. The one against, full disclosure, just has, uh, a, their, their issue is on the religious entities part. Again, um, it, it was great, great civil conversation. Respect, respect that advisor board member. And, um, that individual believes that, um, there shouldn't be any. But are we going to restrict ourselves and be so selective? The door has to swing both ways. So, uh, no matter who you, who comes to us, uh, different types of religious entities, we have to be open, open to that, and we have to be prepared for that. Again, and if there's a gray area there, we're going to have to run it up. Again, what's most important out of, uh, even talking with R S and, and a couple of those agency directors who've had these policies in place, the most important piece is for the agency to maintain consistency, stick to that policy. If there's ever a legal issue, what you have to stand on is the consistency of which you have this policy.
And question, Paul, in terms of the religious entity that you just brought up that you had a board member voting against, you, you, you kind of patterned that after other policies that are already in place.
Okay, that's correct.
So you're not the, you didn't, you didn't create the will there.
I didn't create this, this, this will. I, I took it and, and massaged it to where I felt it was fit, fit right for Davie County.
And as far as the board's concerned, I, I have also questioned that particular phrase in there to Paul and told him I thought that it needed to be taken out. What that does is actually run a red flag up the flagpole and all for anybody to come in. And if you'll look back, go back to your purpose. Your second bullet point on your purpose. Purpose is to protect the vision, mission, and image of the county of Davie and its Recreation and Parks Agency. Therefore, if you've got something in there that says religious organizations can, can buy sponsorships, then you have to say that all religious organizations can buy sponsorships. And, uh, the United States Supreme Court and the R S have said that the Temple of Sect could buy that, could buy that sponsorship. The Order of the Nine Angels could buy that sponsorship. Uh, the Piedmont, North Carolina Piedmont Church of Wickham, Wicca, could buy that sponsorship. And if we're wanting to protect the vision, mission, and image of the county and its Recreation and Parks Department, then you're allowing those to buy those sponsorships. And you're basically saying, if you allow, allow religions to buy sponsorship, you've got to allow all religions to buy sponsorship. Those are all satanic, uh, religious organizations that have been, been said that they are religion by the United States Supreme Court and also by the Internal Revenue Service. They have been granted, uh, nonprofit as a religious organization. So if you put that in there that religions can do it, then you're running the red flag up that all religions can. And at that point in time, you may be, uh, waving a flag for some of these organizations to bring somebody into the Davie County to try to, try to buy that sponsorship. And then when you deny, then the A C O U comes in behind them because they're the ones probably who has, has, and, and in their own way have made certain that organization came in and asked for that sponsorship. So.
A C O U.
You can still sell sponsorships to religions, but by having that in there.
Good, the, the good thing is, a couple of things, uh, you know, Ed's doing what he has to do as, as, as he's.
I think that only certain religions should be able to, to do that from a personal standpoint, my personal opinion, but my legal opinion of this board would be otherwise.
And again, you took that segment from other policies that are in place.
Absolutely.
In other counties.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yes, you, you always run a risk. I mean, even every, every local government, every local government, uh, there, the A C O U could step in on a lot of, uh, local governments in this North Carolina from just board meetings, if you think about it. Uh, it happened to Rowan County when I was in Salisbury. But, uh, again, I think if as long as we stick with the policy, we're, we're fine. And, um, you know, there are plenty of examples. If you need for me to share with you examples of, of potential entities that come in and want to look at, look at, uh, want to have, buy a, an advertisement, what we would allow and not allow, I can provide those.
Yeah, and I think what we should do here today, this is a presentation. The commissioners can look at this and they can redline and give you recommendations on the draft. We don't need to debate.
That's right.
Parts of what you're presenting.
At the end of the day, whatever the policy ends up being, we're going to follow to a T as an agency. That's our duty. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Appreciate you and your board and your staff. Mr. Easter.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, Board. What I'm going to bring to you today is kind of a, we're addressing an issue that's started coming up a little bit more and referencing in our table of uses. Been reached out by a couple of entities around here about potentially doing some stuff. And kind of want to give you where we stand now and what's going on in the future with this. So currently in our zoning ordinance, we do allow for temporary seasonal uses. It's specifically defined as the establishment of temporary sales lots for farmers markets, Christmas trees, and other seasonal agricultural products plus related goods. It's permitted up for a maximum of three months upon the issuance of a temporary use permit by the zoning administrator. So, okay. Those are the conditions that you have to meet. The storage of goods or sales of goods from trailers onsite shall be prohibited. The use may be located on a vacant lot or a lot occupied by non-residential use. Off-street parking may be provided behind or to the side of established use, but not forward of the required front setbacks. On-site parking may be provided on a dust-free previous surface area and need not comply with additional paving requirements. That's in there. That's currently, it's been there for quite a while. These are the areas that you can do this at and only in Davie County. Highway Business District, Neighborhood Business District, Community Shopping District, General Industrial District, Heavy Industrial District. As some of the presentations I've alluded to in the past, ninety-eight percent of Davie County does not meet any of those requirements. It's either R A or R twenty. So, if we're on, this takes the bona fide farms completely out of it. So, if you're on a bona fide farm, you're not subject to this. So, if you're already an existing farm and you wanna set up and sell produce on your existing bona fide farm, this will not accept this. So, what we need to do, or what I'm, what I'm asking, uh, this board to do or to consider is maybe establishing some new requirements to allow this for other uses throughout the county and other areas. So, what I'm asking to do is to add this to this and change the definition of seasonal uses. And what, what I've highlighted in here, the red are the changes. So, temporary seasonal uses, events, we'll call events, and structures. The establishment of temporary sales for farmers markets, Christmas trees, corn mazes, and other seasonal agricultural products plus related goods is permitted up to a maximum of three months upon the issuance of a temporary use permit by the zoning administrator. Flea markets, craft fairs, gun shows, cruises, concert, motor vehicle shows, carnivals, rodeos, tractor pulls, and other seasonal events are permitted up to three consecutive days, no more than four times in a one-year period in the same location upon issuance of a temporary use permit by the zoning administrator. So, if a local little league or has a field that's out in the county and they wanna set up a three-day weekend event and do sale events as a fundraiser to do, I don't know, a craft fair, we're gonna do Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, this would allow them to do that. The majority of the county has stated earlier, it's either R A or R twenty would not meet any of the requirements. So, currently, they're not able to do that, okay? With those conditions, we're gonna keep the existing conditions that we already have in place, and they're gonna add some conditions to it. We're gonna make a, ask for them to submit an application for a permit to, to, to the zoning administration on a form in the manner prescribed by him and her, the person who will organize and sponsor or hold the seasonal event, the applicant, she'll be filed with the zoning administrator at least sixty days prior to the commencement of the seasonal event. We wanna know who the applicant is. Uh, identification of the persons responsible for organizing, sponsoring, holding the event, location of the proposed seasonal event, the estimated maximum number of persons reasonably expected to be in the attendance at one time, the date or dates and the hours during which the seasonal event is to be conducted, a statement as to the total time period involved. We're, we're capping the areas of operation of these events from eight A M. to ten P M. Also with that, we're gonna ask them to submit, uh, an outline map, site plan used, approximate scale show on the location of proposed and existing laboratory facilities, all parking, existing structures, vending areas, stages, water supply sources, including lakes, ponds, streams, wells, stores, tanks, and the like, all areas of assemblage, all food service area, all garbage and refuse storage and disposal area, all entrance and exits, public woodways, and emergency ingress and egress roads. Also that, we would be asking that it would be allowed, permitted in pretty much every zoning district that we currently have in Davie County except mobile homes. Cause as stated earlier, R twenty and R A make up ninety-eight percent of the county. So, if a local church that's in R, R A, um, out in the county wants to do a three-day fundraiser, if they wanna do a cruise in there and hold it over a three-day period and bring people in, this would allow them to do this. In essence, if it extends more than that and the intended use turns, turns into a lot more, then that would require special use permits and rezoning. This allows for individuals to do temporary events that don't meet the zoning ordinance just from a temporary time. So, be more than happy to address any questions, concerns that you guys would have about this.
I, I just have a general question is what generated this?
We've had a couple of people reach out.
Specifically.
Specifically, we had an organization, we've had a couple of people reach out and address to us about wanting to hold some events on their property and what would it entail and take. Um, so with that, I've had discussions with Brian and discussions with Ed about what is temporary. I know the surrounding municipalities around here have allowances in the zoning ordinance for this. And also with this, addressing some of the concerns with some of the farmers markets and some of the craft fairs setting up. In theory, they're not allowed unless they're on a bona fide farm. So, if somebody wants to set up a fruit stand and you have a local garden and you wanna set up and sell fruit stands or sell stuff in your, in, in your yard and your rural parts of Davie County, you can't. So, this just allows them the ability to do that outside the normal scope. It's temporary, it's not full-time. If that changes and turns into that, then this, we would address this going forward with this. But this is just something, um, turkey shoots, ham shoots would follow this. I know we don't have those, but town of Moxville addresses those. But some of these seasonal events, part-time, outside of the normal scope of events, people are gonna do in this, but add some, um, steps in it to come in compliance with this.
A, a turkey shoot is generally a one-day event.
Right.
So, you're telling me if a church wants to hold a fall festival on a Sunday afternoon, they're bringing in a food truck, whatever, that, this does not.
That does not meet that. No, it does not. So, if you had a, uh, for example, if you had a barn and it wasn't, um, was ag exempt? And a community group wanted to get into it and wanna sell those and do a big flea market, or do a craft fair, or a cruise in and hold it over the weekend, or we've had questions about a tractor pull, um, a gun show, um, if somebody wanna set up and do a three-day music festival. We do have a mass gathering ordinance, okay, that kicks into it. This is not the mass gathering ordinance with that. So, the mass gathering ordinance is something totally different. This is just for, for an event, for fundraisers, um, that don't occur on a regular basis.
Question.
Sure.
Second question, and, uh, Paul's still here. Have you, have you guys coordinated in terms of, cause they do more of this kind of thing other than just local entities of how this would affect, um, things that parks and rec do, the school system does, those kind of things?
I haven't discussed this. This is just, like I said, the infancy with this. Um, some of the stuff that Paul does, it wouldn't affect the municipalities if it does, like, this would not affect the community park at all whatsoever. Cause it's a Moxville.
Like, if they wanna do a three-day weekend music festival, this does not apply.
That's Moxville. Yeah, that's Moxville. So, like if Davie High School, for example, it's in the county. If Davie High School chose that they wanted to do a cruise in and hover all over the weekend, we would, we would address that with that. Um, some of the school systems, if they chose to do these festivals, and if it's a one-day, one-off thing, your local churches, the Ruitin Club, Boy Scout. This would also allow, for example, if, um, uh, the Boy Scouts wanted to sell our local little league, somebody had a lot that they wanted to set up and allow them to sell Christmas trees, to sell, um, poinsettias, or whatever, over time, it would allow them to do that. As it currently stands now, unless you're in one of those zoning, which as stated, it's gonna be an industrial-type zoning anyway, you're not allowed to do that.
I guess Truist Park is in Bermuda Run, so their policy, their, their zoning policies would adhere to Truist Park.
Yeah.
What about, for instance, the Davie, not Little League, the Davie Youth Complex that puts on two- and three-day events, were they?
That, 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 that's a baseball. So, this is outside the normal intended use.
Okay.
Right, so, so, so church, if, if it's, it's a baseball field, it's gonna be a baseball field.
Okay.
That's a baseball. That is what it is. But say that baseball field wanted to set up and they wanted to do a cruise in associated with a concert, something not out of the norm. They're already conforming to the intended use, but if they wanna do something outside of the norm, and they said, hey, look, we wanna be able to reach out to do the fundraiser, we're gonna have a concert, um, and we're gonna do a cruise in, and we're gonna start Friday afternoon and go through Sunday, can we do this? That, this would allow them to do that with, with these caveats and conditions associated with that.
Has to be a multi-day event for this. I mean, this is just multi-day.
We're, we're looking at, we're looking at a couple of days over that. It could be up to that, you, you know, with that. If you wanted to do a weekend outside of the normal scope of Friday and Saturday, up to three days, normally Fridays, um, probably not that. But if you wanna do a Saturday and Sunday kind of event with that, it would be addressed in this too.
Let me ask this, don't, this, don't, I don't want this to sound flippant, but church mission is its mission, so two-week-long Bible school doesn't apply.
No, doesn't.
Okay.
That, 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 that is, that is, that is fielding, that, that's a church.
Right.
That's a function of the church. This is not that.
What if a church has a breakfast fundraiser every single week for six months?
That, that would not fit this either. That, that's part of the church, the outreach of the church with that, yeah, that would not.
But what about in this true question, my wife hosts a farmer's market at a church for five months approximately weekly, which part applies? It's one, you could, I mean, you could argue in a technical way that it's, you're doing it once a week. It's a one-day event, a one-day event, a one-day event, or you could say it's collectively a five-month period, so.
So, so as it, as it currently states now, she would not be able to do that. If you run and will look at it, unless it's zoned, Neighborhood Business, Highway Business, Community Shopping District, General Industrial District, or Heavy Industrial, it doesn't allow.
But people have been, I mean, but people have been doing it in it.
And I, like I said, we don't, we don't ride around and police those things. A lot, lot of these things are already taking place. Like, if, if a local church wanted to set up and set a Christmas tree lot and sell it in their front yard, right? And we're gonna do that seasonal, we're gonna do lots, we're getting the money, we're generating with that. In theory, you could look at this and say, if the zoning isn't right, they can't do that.
Right. I just don't wanna create, I guess, I see your point. I don't wanna create some unintended consequence of bureaucracy.
See, see, if you look at this, so, so for, for the example, you, you used Commissioner Shoff, so we say seasonal uses and structures. So, we say the farmer's market, okay, is permitted up to three months temporary, right? So, that church, they wanna do that, so they're gonna do the farmer's market at the church. In order to be able to do that, they gotta be in one of those zoning districts. If you really look at, and they're not. I, I would, I would suffice to say the majority of the churches, which were allowed churches in R A, churches can pretty much go anywhere, but for a church to be zoned, you know, Highway Business in Davie County is, is not very likely. So, this just gives the ability to, I guess, get a better handle on some of the things that are already currently going on and give, if people want to choose these things, then these are the necessary steps they would have to make.
I just don't wanna draw attention to it and arm some knucklehead in a community with fighting a church about having a farmer's market because it's, they just didn't like it because some older person turned in too slowly one time.
A farmer's market's a one-day event generally.
Yeah, yeah, they can do it, but, but they can do it up for a three-month period with that, with a farmer's market or Christmas tree lot.
What would they, what would they need to do in?
Reach out to us and say they're gonna do it and say, okay, if they ask for a permit, it's just, we, we don't have a fee or anything associated with that and just say, okay, you're in compliance.
But right now, they're not, is what you're saying.
Right now, they're not, but they're not having to go, I mean, right now, they're not, but they're not having to go through any hoops to do it because nobody's really questioning.
Correct, correct. And, and they're asking for, they're not asking for permission, they're asking for forgiveness if it gets to that point.
But, but wait, hold on just a second.
Right.
I thought that this specifically addressed in terms of the three months, six, whatever that month
Right.
addressed multi-day events. A farmer's market, a one-day event,
Right.
they can do those one a week for, for a year if they want to.
Not currently.
Only if they're in the certain zone.
Only if they're current zoning districts. That's what the red, it's cur.
It goes on, but it's not legal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and this has been, this predates probably everybody sitting in this room, uh, but it's hardly currently in there. And, and what I've added with this, and the only thing that I added to the existing ordinance is these standalone three-day events. That, that's what I added to these, the temporary, so, the temporary, but the farmer's market, if it's continuing, the Christmas tree sales and all those things, if they're going and not on a bona fide farm, then the only place they can do it allowable, and like I said, we're not gonna get phone calls. Well, I'm sorry. We will get phone calls and we will kinda deal with those, and I, I've gotten phone calls about various stuff too. So, this, it's just one of those things to where, we're just, in an essence, what it is, everybody can look at this, and when you really get into the table of uses, I think the table of uses needs to address what's currently going on in the county. And if we have areas in, in, then the table of uses that prevents somebody from doing what they wanna do, then we need to address it. Um, or we can, we can put, um, I don't wanna put, put safeguards in it to protect the, the community as a whole. And, and I think us updating this little simple thing is, is, we're, we're looking at that.
Okay, so from this day forward, because it's now been made public, our churches cannot have those events without getting a permit. And if they're in the incorrect zonings, they cannot get a permit because it's not allowed.
If I receive an official complaint, then we would, then we would have to respond and deal with them, but I'm not, you know.
So, following up on that, whatever we decide to do here, when we put it to where they can be in compliance, what is it gonna cost them to obtain a permit in order to have their events now?
The Board of County Commissioners sets the fees. So, if you choose that there's no fees, it's just something they could set, the Board of County Commissioners set fees. I'm not asking, I'm not asking for fees on.
They all know they have to get a permit, that they've never had to do in a hundred years, they're gonna have to get a permit now, so.
Let me ask this, though, could we not have a policy that certain things were exempt?
A hundred percent.
Grandfathered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
I mean, I don't like, I mean, and, you know, take my connection to having a farmer's market out of it. I don't like dictating very much what goes on at a church. Because, you know what I'm saying, as long as it's not something crazy.
Or a Ruitin Club, or, or any organizations, the Moose Lodges, the Elks, and all these little stand-off things that they operate, these things. If you really wanna look at it, I think what we're trying to do is address some of the issues that may arise. We, we've not had problems with it up to this point. I, I've getting calls about various stuff over time, and I can tell you a lot of stuff that we've got calls about, or X, Y, Z is going on here or there. But in essence with this, it just allows civic organizations, the community a law, a law, to be able to come in compliance with this. You know, five oh one C three nonprofit exempts them from various things. It does not exempt them from the zoning ordinance. Bonafide farm usage does.
Yeah, cause I like a church being able to do, I'll give you an example. I just forestry mulched seven acres at my house. I've got about a five-acre field, I could expand it. Cartway from one fifty-eight goes back there. I'm gonna have a big music festival back there for five days, six days. Now, that needs policing, but a church doing things doesn't need policing as such, so that's.
I mean, and, and in this, we could write it out, that, that church or civic school organizations directly with that can do that. But, but this intended use, so, so Commissioner Shoff, so if the local, whatever affiliated church reached out to you and said, we wanna do, we wanna rent your field out, and we wanna, because it's off-site, and we wanna set a farmer's market up or do something there over a three-day period, that is different. As it's currently stands right now, they would not be able to do that. So, what we're asking them to do is saying, okay, the allowance with this, these are what you have to do to do it.
I think if we exempt something, it needs to be the said property, like Smith Grove Ruattan Building, Hillsdale Methodist, whatever, you know what I'm saying? But the church or somebody saying they're gonna have a rally and create traffic issues back on my field is a whole different.
And that, that, that might follow, like, we currently have the mass gathering ordinance in, in there, and I think most municipalities and counties do have those, that we can address those. Any questions? I will be, we just, we will be taking this to, and, and I'd be more than happy between now and then. This is just in a workshop, this has not been presented to the, the planning board, it's not been tweaked yet. If there's areas that we need to address or not address, take out or add, be more than happy to do it. This is just something to kinda put up in the ethos to see your thoughts and concerns about this.
And the mass gathering.
Okay, so Karen, you said you just got this today, so you'll get this to us, okay.
And the mass gathering with it.
Yeah, the mass gathering is already, it's been there for.
Just so, but we need to be able to read it all together.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
May I ask an unrelated question to this specifically, but it relates to zoning? Or at what point can I ask that?
Uh, I guess you can ask it.
Ask away.
It's, are, where are we at on the, um, the lot, you know, the lot-sized talk we've had, the green space and all that? Because I think there might be some confusion as into, you know, we need to put, go ahead and probably work towards adopting policies as soon as we can on some of this, even if we need to break it up into piece, piecemeal.
The next commissioner reading, the official, it will come to this board the next November, what is it, April seventh? It will be advertised and be, be there on April seventh.
This will.
No, no, the, the subdivision, I'm not going to do that on you.
I was getting ready to say, you said the planning board.
Yeah, yeah. You don't have a rock back there. You're going to chuck at me. No, no, this is the, the, the planning board, I took it back there. It will be come to you with a subdivision tiered with that. That, that will be at the next for the official. We got to advertise that post. This is just right now, this is something that we've been discussing and looking at for kind of temporary things throughout the county to allowance for this.
Johnny, we really appreciate this. We'll, you know, obviously, we're going to tweak some things.
Oh, a hundred percent.
And think about this, but I appreciate you trying to think outside the box to help.
It's, that, that, that's what, I, I think for local government, we need to, we need to address concerns. We need to put our ear and listen to what's going on and, you know, some of the calls, it would surprise you, some of the things that people want to do out there, so.
Mostly on private property, Johnny, or like?
Well, you couldn't, in essence, you couldn't do this in a, in a, in a residential area unless it was a vacant lot or, or it was already an established non-residential use. So, like a, like a Ruelton Club, a church, ball field, civic organization, somewhere like that, we could do this. Like if EMS wanted to do something like this, it's just, it's, it's, if it's at somebody's front yard in their house, no, no, we're not, we're not, we're not going to allow that. So.
What about lemonade stands?
I'm not touching that with a ten-foot pole.
I mean, I like for people to be allowed to sell tomatoes, vegetables, whatever.
I mean, you said it applied to, and, and he said it applied to that. Farm stands at your home, so if it applies to farm stands at your home, it would also apply to lemonade stands.
Farm stand at your home, there's some regulations in, in North Carolina General Assembly that allows that with certain size, self-service that, that allows for that. If somebody, and we see these signs all the time where they do the cooler and the fresh eggs, this would not touch this. But if they rented lots out and wanted to sell like a farmer's market, that's, that, that's, that's a totally different entity.
Thanks, Johnny.
Yeah, thank you guys.
We really appreciate it. Robin?
So, two pieces of good news. I'm last and I'll be brief.
Are you going to make us happy?
I don't know about that. I promise is on that one. This compares February year-to-date to where we were last year, February year-to-date. So, the collection rate, according to our tax office, is pretty close to where we were this time last year, so that's good news. Sales tax continues to be slow. Right now, we're seeing a two percent change overall. We're doing a little bit better than the rest of the state as far as that goes. But I expect us to, you know, be in the same boat as some other people. So, that's not exciting about sales tax. So, right now, we have nine hundred thousand dollars of revenues over where we were last year and two million dollars more of expenditures. So, right now, we have ten point, almost ten point eight million dollars more revenues than expenditures, but we're not going to get a whole lot more property tax. I think the collection rate is pretty close to ninety-six percent. So, you know, whatever we collect on vehicles, you'll see that. So, we're still in pretty good shape. We're one point one million dollars behind where we were last year. This next slide shows our revenue comparisons. The blue bar is the current year. The yellow line is last year, and twenty-three is the green bar. So, we're pretty close in everything. Most everything else is either timing or stuff that, you know, we're taking a look at, like some of our charges for services accounts. Let me know if you have any questions.
You're saying revenue behind last year?
No, so nine hundred thousand dollars more, but we have two million dollars more of expenditures. So, between the two, we're one point one behind where we were last fiscal year.
What about the sales tax over the term of the year? How much do you think the approximate difference is going to be between, say, last year?
It's going to be a decrease is my, you know.
Is it going to be like a really substantial number overall?
I don't think so, plus we're very good at, you know, budgeting conservatively for that. So, as far as the budget goes for what we budgeted for sales tax, we'll be in good shape. But, you know, we're not going gangbusters like the COVID years and, you know, and that, you know. Inflation, we're getting better on sales tax because of that, because, you know, that kind of thing is flattening. You know, that's why we're seeing the bit of the difference.
But it's not a game changer, that's the thing.
No, 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 because we've been conservative in the way we budget.
Thank you.
It should be good. All right?
Thanks, Robin.
You're welcome.
All right, Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Pending actions for our April seventh meeting, the biggest thing about April seventh is just to remind everybody that the meeting will start an hour later at seven o'clock instead of six o'clock. As of right now, the only thing that we have is a public hearing, which actually, I think, goes back to Commissioner Shoef's question to Mr. Easter when he was up here to talk about the subdivision discussions that we've had over the last year or so. That is cleared through the planning board, and we are ready to present to you all for final approval. And then we have our normal slate of appointments and reappointments to our various boards and committees. And that's all that we've have so far scheduled for Monday, April the seventh.
Any, any discussion items? Okay. We will come back out after closed session, but if anybody, Richard, do you have any comments?
No, sir, not really. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out today. I did have one observation when Brad was up here talking. His information on the ADA seems to have come from a consulting firm. And then we hear that a consulting firm can help us do that for seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, which makes me think that they're drumming up business. But we do need to address that. And thank you for coming out today.
Appreciate everyone being here, and we're getting long in the tooth here, so.
Yep.
Be brief. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate all you do. Appreciate all the good information. Thanks.
Thank y'all. I'd probably best keep my comments to myself right now.
All right, we are going to go into closed session. Let me read these. Section one forty-three dash three-one-eight, point one-one A six to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, grievance, or by, by or against an individual public officer. One forty-three dash three-one-eight, point one-one A three to consult an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. So, we, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second? Terry, all in favor? We will now go into closed session and thank y'all for all you do.
I'm going to the bathroom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Session?
So moved.
Mr. Shoef?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Renninger, second. It's all in favor? Okay, then we have the new item. The closed session item?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we opt out of the proposed plaintiff's motion to add the pharmacy benefit managers in the pending opioid litigation for Davie County.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Mr. Poindexter makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor of Ms. Finney's motion? Okay.
I'll send it, send it in the form.
Thank you.